Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Neighborhood Commission meeting order. This is our Monday, September 25th, 2020 meeting. Before we start on our agenda, over our rules of speaking, anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise his or her hand, and when recognized by the chair, to address comments to the chair. Speakers are to keep their comments under two minutes. Public testimony taken at the beginning of each agenda item. Please silence all electronic devices. The commission may take action on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law. HRS Chapter 92. Specifications not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless properly added to the agenda. With that, I will start off with our faulty order. So can we have a rule of thumb, commissioners, please?
Mahalo, Lani Burnow.
Here.
John Ching. Bill Clark.
Here.
Steven Melendez.
President.
Richard O'Shea.
President.
Patrick Smith.
Here.
Claire Tomomoto.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, thank you. We have a problem. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, public concerns. Public concerns are limited to two minutes for items on the agenda. Are there any public concerns this evening?
We have Jermaine Myers.
Jermaine Myers?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Myers, you have the floor.
Mahalo, Chair. Thank you so much. Chair, I wanted to share with you my community concerns regarding, relating to Y-9 Neighborhood Board Chair Jonathan Ho'omana Wanui. He didn't agendize any of the city government officials in the September agenda, so therefore longtime board member Johnny May emailed him on September 2nd, a one-sentence request consisting of four words or a question. Why no mayor's rep? Yet Chair Ho'omana Wanui responded with seventeen paragraphs of admonishment and a threat. I'd like to share just some of his response verbatim that were concerning to me. His first four paragraphs were fear-mongering lecture regarding the Ma'ri Lahaina fires. He followed it with this. "I only have two years serving if that. If public not see a young emerging leader, then I cannot say a word. From the chairman's perspective, if we cannot see leaderships taking place, then we no longer need a board or its members. We are elected to serve the people, and that is our priority, not to be babysitter and wait for action. We bring action. This board is different. I will say this now. If we not happy on the board and doing what we supposed to do, then we can start petitioning to remove board members. Politely, this is not a threat. This is happening as we speak. Could be me or any one of us. Now I will say it straight. Sista, I love you, but if you're not happy serving our committees or board, something gotta happen. I usually am nice about things, but we don't need resistance. Love for you, respect for you, but respect your chairman." Ho'omana Wanui. To me, this was a threat and so uncalled for, and this is not the way we treat each other. At September's board meeting, he called out Councilwoman Andrea Topola, Auntie Andrea. When he spoke about Chairman Tommy Waters, he called, addressed him as Uncle Tommy. When he addressed two board members, which is a father and a daughter, he addressed them as, "Oh, yeah, like your daughter. Oh, yeah, like your father. Oh, what? Father-daughter." He's been so out of line, and then I find out that he wants to run for House of Representatives Cedric Gates position, which is Hot Cross Crabs is the Chief of Staff for him. And so that's why I think that some of him picking on Hot Cross Crabs or not putting in order when community members attacking Hot Cross Crabs, which no justification, saying that he doesn't belong on the board because he's a staff member of Cedric Gates. It's really concerning for me.
Your comments, you're hitting too many, sorry.
Okay, no problem. I'm done. Thank you so much, Chair.
Okay, any questions?
Mahalo.
Mr. Chair, which neighborhood board? Is that Y-9?
Y-9.
Y-9 Board?
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner?
Jermaine, this is Commissioner Tomomoto. Have you filed a written complaint with the Neighborhood Commission on this?
No, because all of this, no, Commissioner. Because all of this just happened at the September meeting last Monday, and the email, when he sent the email, I thought that they could resolve it as a board, but he continues to harass board members, and that's where my concern is. And so that's why I just thought I would bring it to the commission, but I can't write a formal complaint, a written complaint, commissioners. I'm willing to do that.
I have another suggestion. If there are instances during the course of the meeting where if you feel it's disrespectful or inappropriate, you can call the chairman out and say, "Please address people with respect," rather than calling them uncle or auntie. I mean, it is a term of endearment perhaps, but in the course of a board meeting, you know, if they are on the agenda, you know, you should address them properly.
Well, when board members have a point of order to do so, he tells them, "No, I don't have time for your point of order," and he disregards them. When they try to correct him regarding addressing them as father-daughter or regarding our elected officials, he just tells them, "I don't have time for your point of order." You can watch that on the video and see that he does those things. But I can summarize all these things from rewatching the video. I was there at the meeting, and then I could put it into a formal complaint, but he just disregards everyone's culianna, you know, and he disregards when Robert's Rules of Order over and over. He disregards the Neighborhood Board Plan over and over, and sunshine law as well. I've seen him do that. He's not humble enough to take suggestions. He's never attended Neighborhood Board meetings in the past until he put his name on the ballot. So he doesn't understand the Neighborhood Board system, but came with a, you know, a whole bunch of agenda and, I guess, personal of how things should be handled.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomomoto.
Yeah, I would suggest, Jermaine, that the best way to handle that, because, you know, it's hard for us to make a, to interject ourselves into this uncle/anti thing because that might be how the board is run, or, you know, as far as the way I'm talking. But I'm more concerned about people, board members, not feeling safe, not being connected business, those kind of things, not agenda items, and just people are, you know, people are raising concerns. I'm more concerned about that kind of stuff. So if you can follow with the complaint, then we can have some action on that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other public concerns tonight?
I see none on the screen.
Okay, we see no other public concerns this evening, so we're gonna move on to our next item on the agenda, the Executive Secretaries Report. Are there any comments before we start? Approve any questions? Oh, sorry. Approve of minutes. This is for our August 28th regular meeting minutes. We did receive, the commission office did receive comments that has been distributed to all of the members. Hopefully had a chance to take a look at them, so we can, we'll entertain a motion to approve our minutes at this point. We have a motion. I submit.
I second.
It's approved and circulated to accept the minutes as circulated. Any further discussion? All of the speakers say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. You can accept it. Approve or disapprove. Thank you. Okay, next we're gonna move on to the Executive Secretaries Report.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just wanted to let the commission and everybody know that we are targeting October 30th for a conference of chairs. October is one of our unique months because the commission meets every fourth Monday, and October has five. So next week after you guys meet, we'll have a commission, a conference of chairs. It will be a hybrid. I'm not quite sure. We'll ask for the RSE to see how many people. I'll probably have it here upstairs as a bigger meeting room. I would expect the majority of the people to attend virtually, but then you never know. And I don't expect it to be a long, I think, two hours max. The first hour will talk mainly about what we're doing and some of the things that might impact them. The second hour will probably be related to answering their questions and covering things that they might interest in. And if I can, if I can address those things in the first hour, then we create one. I think, I think that all the chairs appreciate that part of the meeting where you can just ask them. Just letting you know, that's the plan. I would like all of you to be there if you can, or at least in the virtual side.
So I just have a question regarding that, you know, in the past, we have not attended because of this pig thing, sunshine law, having, you know, to... Are we in a clear with all of that?
You know, it's such a strange thing because the plan says that the commission shall do a conference of chairs, but you're right, if you guys all show up, it's a violation of sunshine, which is, you know, not what we want. So I went ahead and so I do it, and you guys aren't there, but I can try and get an opinion from OIP.
Yeah, I would.
Because it's supposed to be...
That's why we did something to boost your vibe.
I don't know, but it...
I don't agree.
Yeah.
Because we're not taking any action, right? Like, what if it's...
Yeah, and I, and I think it's a, it's a meeting for them, not you. You aren't part of it in terms of, you know, conducting the meeting, so... I will see if I can get a quick response from them.
Okay.
It was always, I always thought it was an odd thing because it's supposed to be the commission who does the conference of chairs, but it'll be a violation if you guys all in the same place, the same guy. Hey, I'll find out, get back.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on the Executive Secretaries Report?
No, that's it.
I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, unfinished business. Neighborhood Commission survey. I will note that the commission office did receive an anonymous set of comments. They've been circulated, you see me. I don't know, Commissioner Burnow, but she also, that was circulated. It was passed to everybody, I believe. So I'll open that up, and I'll turn it over to Steven, if you want to. He did that survey.
I used to be working on it.
Yeah, please.
Chair, we're gonna have to open up to public testimony on...
Yeah, are there any?
You should do that first.
Any comments on the survey testimony that people would like to submit, like... See any? Do you see any?
Yeah, Jermaine Myers.
Okay, Ms. Myers, you have the floor. You proceed.
Mahalo, Chair. Thank you so much for the survey. I went through the, to the survey committee, I went through the packet, and it's amazing and wonderful. May I just make some recommendations to the commission to remove a couple of the questions? So question number seven and question number eight are concerning... So question number seven, concerning the work of the Neighborhood Board Assistant. What is your proficiency opinions on NA's support for advisement of the board members on the meaning and provisions of the Neighborhood Board Plan? My concern having the Neighborhood Board Plan, the NAs advising about the Neighborhood Board Plan, and the sunshine law, you know, it takes away from making the officers responsible. The Neighborhood Board Plan states that the chairman, the vice chair, the secretary, the treasurer, and any other elected. Some boards have first chair and second chair, some have sergeant-at-arms. I feel it's their culianna to understand the Neighborhood Board Plan and the sunshine law. Many of them, they just lean on, "Oh, let's look to the neighborhood, the NA to referee us." And I really feel that that shouldn't be happening. They should know the rules, but they wanted to take the officer's position. And so I feel that the only thing that would support them understanding it and as well as members, including Robert's Rules. Many of them don't know Robert's Rules, and they should be knowing it because the plan states we're supposed to follow Robert's Rules. I really feel that just more training, and I'm willing to help in creating videos for training to like OIP created the sunshine law video. But you know, when we have turnover, we have new board members, we have officers. The officers should take the lead on learning it. And so if they wanted to raise their hand and take up an officer's position, it's their culianna and not put it on the NAs or the NCO to now all of a sudden tell them, "Oh, yeah, you were right or wrong." Because many of them, I watched them, they don't even know it at all, period. Robert's Rules and sunshine law and the Neighborhood Board Plan, and then when somebody calls it out, they're like, "Oh, what do you say, NA?" They should know it. So that's my culianna, Chair. I'm sorry, number... Oh, I forgot to add number...
So I'm thinking, your suggestion is to remove items number seven and eight, is that correct?
Correct, seven and eight.
Thank you.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Mahalo.
Do we have any other public testimony on the survey?
Yes, Larry Barret.
Okay, Chair recognizes Larry Barret. Proceed. Larry?
Muted again.
Yeah, he's muted on his end.
Larry?
Larry, you're muted.
Yeah, that's true. There's trouble in the way.
Oh, well.
Good job.
Okay.
Go ahead, Larry.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
I don't know what's wrong. I went to Zoom, tested all this out before I started, and I apologize. But anyway, what I want to say is, you know, like I said last week, I think this survey is very healthy for the commission, for the NCO, and also for the board chairs, everybody to participate. This is a great opportunity for constructive criticism. I provided a number of suggestions to Commissioner Melendez on what I like to see, and I think the other thing that was lacking in that, in the survey, was we need to, we need to talk about the Neighborhood Boards themselves, how they're run, and what substance do they provide with supporting community concerns? So, but anyway, I have a long list. I think it was very well prepared, but, but I think with the suggestions I put in, I think it'll help you out. I do believe in the demographics, that first question there about age. You know, it's interesting to find out, and I'd like to find out when you look at the age groups that are on the Neighborhood Boards, because we really do need to bring in a younger, younger generation. We still got a lot of mentors out there, but I don't want to take any more time. I'm definitely supportive of that survey.
Larry, where did you submit the questions?
Say again?
Where did you submit the questions?
I sent them to Commissioner Melendez because I didn't see who else I was supposed to send them to.
Okay. I'll make sure that we get them. Nothing to do, nothing to... Thank you, Larry.
All right, thank you very much.
I don't see anyone else with their hands or something.
Okay, I don't, we have no further testimony on the survey, so I'll turn it over to Commissioner Barret.
Thank you. What I've done since our last meeting, I went ahead and took a lot of the comments to heart and made some edits to it and updated it. I had, so the front page, September 25th, this is just what I spoke last time concerning perspective and framing this. I had this process developed last time, so we'll need to publish it before we put it out. So this will be a process, a straw man process. I don't know if you have that. Can you show that up online?
I don't have it set up.
Okay, then I'll just talk about the survey. But I have a...
I had a question.
Process.
Starting with that?
That's a bit more involved. I was gonna go through the survey. The process...
Received the survey.
Yeah, the process is a straw man. What commission may go through in the survey process and looking at it towards neighborhood plan. That's what the process is. Sorry, I delineated it.
Well, no, there's some items on there that I think we have to change.
That's fine. The items on this, from the commissioner's side, anything you see that may need to be, because it is a legacy, may need to be revised. Please just add it in this email.
Well, I'll just tell you, for example, the third, number three, the completed surveys are emailed to the survey committee members, and you cite yourself and Jonathan Ching. I think it needs to be passed to the commission office for them to receive all of the surveys, not to you personally.
Yeah, the last time you mentioned that the survey committee would have done a survey, neighborhood plan, neighborhood plan, so I delineated it and such. But going to NCO, I think that's where we had a reason. That's fine. An NCO can distribute it. That's a good idea. Can do.
I mean, they can give it, once they get it all, they can batch it and send it to you.
So we got our word from Lloyd then. That a word from you?
Well, I don't think it should go to your personal email. Now, in terms, it's official, it's a survey, if it's coming from the commission. The only thing I would suggest, that you should check all of your emails, Steven. And I think you'd have your work email loaded on there. It's a state email, so I think you should make sure you change it if you're personal.
Now, that's been...
Just to make sure that that's been... No, no, I still saw some of the emails, so just double-check them.
Right. Yeah, state is just... I think we did that one because they don't have that.
Well, you know, good information. It's not on the, it's not their business, personal and business. And then other emails I saw from the...
ERS email, all there.
It's been changed. Well, that's okay. Well, but this is the picture.
Yeah, I've stated to speak. That's when, they don't need to fix it and stuff. But anyway, yeah, that's been updated. It's all pretty fine. Anything else on the process? Anything you'd like to mention?
Do you want me to walk through that? The thing that I don't want people to miss out on is, for example, the survey is not the way that we're soliciting neighborhood plan amendments, okay? The Neighborhood Plan Committee will solicit neighborhood plan amendments from the public, from neighborhood boards and from the public. So it will go directly to the Neighborhood Plan Committee in terms of amendments. And when you have those, they will all be put together, and then we will go to public hearing. And we noted that. So the survey committee may come up with suggestions as to, you know, what might be a good survey, I mean, a neighborhood plan change, but they will not be the repository of receiving plan amendment changes. Just so it's not, you know, I think it could give people the wrong idea that you're gonna get all those suggestions and put together a set of plan amendments. Those will be collected by the Neighborhood Plan Committee, not the survey.
That's right.
And you said neighborhood plan number eleven incorporates comments from number eleven, provides final draft. So, you know, you're establishing a relationship that has not been established between the survey committee being like a conduit for neighborhood planning. To me, that was a little confusing. When you put all of that stuff in there, I don't know if it's even necessary to put that stuff in the survey.
The process is, is sure that we can make them...
But I think you should take it all out. When you set out a survey, it just comes back to the NCO, and then they compile it.
This process is for the commission, it's not the survey.
Survey, it went off to all of the boards already. The survey is just a sort of process, the sheet that has processed on it. Hello, you had something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, there's two different committees here. One is the Neighborhood Plan Committee.
Right, right.
And the other one is the survey committee. So usually the survey committee would do whatever survey it feels important and could provide that data and information to the whole commission that may be pertinent to the Neighborhood Plan Committee. When it comes to redoing the plan, amendments, Chapter 20 is dedicated, on the Neighborhood Plan, is dedicated to that process.
Correct.
It is very specific. You need two public hearings.
Right.
You need things nailed out thirty days in advance.
Right.
You have to have a certain outreach to everybody who can provide information back. So I don't know how this would match up against this. So I think from our perspective, from the Neighborhood Commission office, we want to keep them separate in terms of the committees. This is the plan, this is the survey committee. And whatever information from the survey committee is available to all of the members and the Plan Committee, and from there, the Plan Committee can follow the process online in...
Separate.
Yeah, separate in the, in the Neighborhood Plan.
Yes.
That, you know, to deviate from this would be a violation of the plan. And if, yeah, we can, so the point is that at some point, if we decide to change the plan, then maybe we'll change the process for amendment two. But right now, I think we should make sure we follow what's laid out in the neighborhood plan for that process. But as far as the information from the survey committee, I think anytime Neighborhood Plan Committee, you get more information and data, I think that's fine. But it shouldn't be just that, providing information to that committee. And I don't think it, it really needs to talk about process. We really should talk about plan, you know, process.
Good. Okay, let's go on with the survey. That's something I, that's what I want to concentrate on today. As I mentioned, the survey has been updated from the last discussion. Item one, what's your age range? Same as last time, we just added the word range, talked about. Work status, and a lot of these questions here, we're just framing so we know who it is that we're talking to. A young person's gonna order, gonna want, answer something one way, and a older person's gonna answer something maybe another way. How many terms have you served? I'm amazed that our volunteers are wonderful. How many terms have you served? I think I'm on my, on the Neighborhood Board, I'm on my fourth term. Item four, decade of judicial internal office. Many of the people that we have on the boards, we've been with for years, decade actually.
But why would that be important if you've already gotten the terms of office, so? I mean, if we're just trying to get demographic information, really, right? Because this is, I guess, I guess I know you want to go to the survey portion, but in my mind, I think the survey is supposed to be informational, you know, kind of to get feedback. Or another way to reach, to get feedback. So I think just more age range, working status, and the number of years you've served on the Neighborhood Board. And if there are white question for, would be necessary, that's fine.
That's fine. What do you have in consideration? Two of the chairs had asked about that. They'd like to see that in there, but we can, we can edit that.
Well, I mean, you guys can discuss it, but I just...
Sure.
I have a suggestion too. There was an excellent point in our material about number three is just how many terms have you served, maybe because of the comma, including the current term? Just to make it clarify, because some people kind of think about it. Yeah, it was, it was pointed out, and I hope that's...
And terms of office always been two years from the beginning of the plan. I mean, I can... Okay.
Tell me, if you can, Chair, or may I address this?
Yes, yes.
Can you tell me why you need, what's the purpose of knowing how many terms someone served? Is it to gauge their experience as a, as a board member with...
What we do, we weigh off one question to the other and see if you have some, especially when you go into the training area. Some of the questions, we bounce them, weigh them against another, we run the graphics, we run the analysis. It's gonna tell us actually what kind of job you're doing, who knows what, how, where we should concentrate our resources to help improve the Neighborhood Board System. That's a reason for some of this. That applies to graphics.
Okay, so...
And then we talked about that last time, using survey money to run that, to run the graphics out of that. Save a lot of time.
So the purpose of the survey is not only to give us ideas for the Neighborhood Plan, or, you know, to revision for that, but also to figure out, to figure out how we're gonna proceed in planning or training?
There is information on how to improve the neighborhood board system. And the, the plan committee can use that as, like I mentioned here, consideration. There is a may need to be, certainly be updated, several of the chairs have asked if we can do that. And so it's up to the neighborhood planning committee how to use the data. And yeah, some questions to overlap, that's correct. Item five is interesting, because a lot of persons that we've dealt with to the neighborhood board system, they volunteer at organizations. So it has the breadth that they've been giving on the boards.
Still, one of the things that has changed over the course of time, we talked about the background of the board directors. Many moons ago, many years ago, as I recall, in Grandford neighborhood board, they ask specifics that are questioned. Today, you can just put in a statement saying, you know, I'm gonna serve the community and that's why I'm running the board. It doesn't ask you what you do, what's your background is, and it's entirely up to the people, so if, if you wanna get information about candidates, you're gonna ask specific questions, so they have to put that out on their own. Many do, many don't, so for some people, you're kind of flying, and you have no clue who that person is. So, you know, to me, if you ask that kind of question, it's not gonna give you much information in return, how many organizations you participated, maybe you're very active, maybe you're not, but still, the way you're gonna get that kind of information, I think, is if you were to ask specific questions like filling out a job application. But we don't do that, and I don't know if that's something that we should wanna consider for the future. Because, yeah, so many of the profiles today is just, you know, smug sounding statements, the people, you have no clue you know, of their background, or whether they've been working in the community, or whatever, so and I, I don't know if the survey, you know, draws that kind of information.
Well, I guess I'll try to wonder the relevancy of the question, because even if we get that information, are we gonna say, okay, for our candidates, we would like to have more of a biographical information? Or if the purpose is not to do that, I mean, I, I think that's information that's not necessary to get, I mean, it's private, I mean, just because this might be my first attempt at a volunteer organization, what does that information do for you? I mean, are we gonna say, in order to be a candidate, you have to have, you know, stake your volunteer information? Is that something you wanna have?
What I'm saying is that we don't see a lot of it, we have more general statements from people, so we have no clue, you know, who we're likely just based on that kind of personal statement. Whether we require that in the future, I don't know, that's up to the commission to decide, that's, that's totally different. So we've come away from where it was in the past, where you used to put, you know, name, rank, serial number, for example, not, not anymore. We've, we've really gone away from that, so whether that is more helpful to people when they vote, or it's not, I, I don't know. But, yeah, for many boards, I see that, I think we have no, no idea who the person.
I noticed that some of these things that you're talking about, excuse me. Is when you put your application in, place on the ballot, that kind of information is usually on that that hope, see the people, although it's limited, and I'm wanting words in the US, where you try to fill in as much as you can right in, so, I don't know if we have a chance to see if something's not valid, yes, but I, I yield to Lloyd.
Yeah, I didn't wanna jump in without thinking how much work it's gonna be. And I think Dylan did have some comments too, but I, I agree, and my question to him was, when people apply to run? I think there is a, I don't know, is there a date of birth on that?
Nope.
Okay.
There's no requirement, any, just name, and maybe address to verify.
Right, and, and so, what I was thinking of, that it's possible that we may have a lot of information that comes in when they first run, the challenge is, we don't have it broken up in a nice, easy way to, to get the information, that, anyway. I would have to look at the application and see once there that we can actually pull it up.
An application is just a four hundred, you know, of characters you can put in, write whatever you want.
But it also is technically possible for us to look at every person and figure out if they've been on the board before, all along with the first word.
So what would you do with them?
Well, that would be part of the question, that, you know, how long have you served, and we could just pull that up, so we could get a demographic.
I wasn't referring to how long they've served, for the experience in volunteer organizations, or their business, their businesses and all that kind of stuff, it's for you, an idea of, will this person work good on a board anywhere? If a person says, I played baseball, I played football, and I have gotten a gold medal for my wrestling thing, I'm thinking, okay, that doesn't tell me a thing about what they do on a board. But if they say, I have worked for ten years for a fire department, I have teaching classes here, dah, 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 dah.
What if you aren't that kind of, what if you don't have all that experience?
Then you don't, then you don't like that.
Well, you can't, you can't say that, you can't say that.
Well, you put what you have, you know, that's the whole idea, so, if that's who the person is, they haven't done anything, then they just can indicate their desire to serve.
Yeah, then they definitely should just screen them off, I think they're being careful.
I think they're all more than that.
No, no, no.
Chair, and Commissioner Melendres, for question number five, it says here, how many other volunteers, organizations have you participated? Would you maybe consider adding how many volunteer organizations and have you held a board position? Or leadership position in those organizations? If you would add that.
Hey, may I see one more thing? Um, well, maybe not one more thing, really. To be honest with you. I think the, if, part of the traction for me to coming, coming to this position and working with the neighborhood boards is that the boards are just wide open, I mean, it just says, anybody, if you live in a neighborhood, you can be on the board. If you live in a neighborhood, you can vote, you can be in jail, you can vote, you can be in jail, you get a bad record, you can still be on the board. And it's, and you can be a, a, someone who's not a youth citizen, you can be a military person. And the whole point was that your community is made out of all kinds of people. I mean, you, and you know, you, there are all kinds of people on your board. And I, I, I thought that was the beauty of it, because it just didn't describe. So, I think.
It gives you perspective, different perspective.
Yeah, it does, and, and, you know, I kinda like it when somebody is really different, because I've never thought of the things that they thought about. But the point of the neighborhood boards is that it, it seeks diversity. And, and, and I, I like that, and I think we shouldn't close that part off too much. It would be good to understand who's on the board.
Understand.
Yeah, but I think everybody can bring something to the board.
Yeah, the other thing is that, when you look at all the boards and the elections, and I didn't think that. You know, I think a majority, or more than a majority of the boards, most of the people get elected, whatever background they have, because you don't have hot races in, you know, every board, or many of the races, whoever runs can say, so, when you talk about a real diversity of folks, whoever puts the application in, you know, decides to run, chances are, you have a good chance of getting one. Whatever board you run, you just look at all where the contested races were, and if there are contestants, maybe it's the differences between maybe ten members, or twelve members, or ten members, or eleven members, or eighteen versus nineteen, you know, something like that. It's not where you have, you know, twenty people wanting to put ten seats. I don't know if you had any, any place like that, if we had, that's really great, actually. The norm is really, most of the people, you know, eighty, ninety percent get it. And you can check the records, see if that's accurate or not, I know at one point I looked at that. Yeah, most of the people get odds, you know, whatever you put on the application, you know, is fine, it's a reflective of the person, so if people don't wanna put detailed information of what they did or are doing, then that's fine, they can just put a, you know, aspirational kind of statement of what they wanted to do, whatever they want.
And I would agree with Lloyd that I think the diversity is our strength. Diversity is our strength, and neighborhood boards, like, they reflect their community. And there's like in Chinatown, or where I'm in Midlani, or Y9, they're all reflecting that. And that's our strength, I've had others, other islands, people asking about neighborhood board, why don't we have it in our county? Several people have asked me. Especially from Maui.
Not to need the longest discussion, what's the settlement of the commission in terms of do we need to give even more time to work that part of the survey, or are you ready? Do you look at the draft, or?
I guess I'd say, if, if it's for fact finding, like question eight, question five. So are we gonna get the results in a tally form, like so many people said this to question five, so many people said this? Or are we gonna get it on this survey, this person who had maybe ten years on the neighborhood board, you know, and where you might weight their opinion more, or, but if we're just gonna get a tick list?
It's gonna be a graphic representation, the same way we have in the past.
I understand.
Go ahead.
If I, I think it's the former, not the latter, in other words, what you're gonna see is, is the graphics based on the answer to each question. It won't be, I don't know if there is a possibility unless you spirited out just one person's answer. And so, I don't know that you can do relational type of analysis, in other words, say, okay, how many people have turned, served more than ten terms? How did they answer this question, I think that's a little, you know, actually you could, because you get all this in Excel, and it takes a little bit of knowledge to be able to ask, you know, to generate the formulas to ask.
This is mostly the fact finding, and I wanted to have persons respond back to it, pretty into the survey, as to what areas they'd like to see in their training, what areas they'd like to see in the plan, social media, item twenty, we had talked about it before, I brought that up before. There's things that we've not addressed in the plan, which looks like it should be time to look at it. And many of the boards are running it, doing it anyway. And so, they're calling, saying, what about this, what about that, and they're asking for guidance. So now I would be not sure to step in and do that, and whatever that might be, that's fine, when you go into social media, I would say, what's social media, it's all over the place, what are you talking about, item twenty? That at least tells us where our boards are going to be, what they're looking for. Just to give you some basic guidance. And talk to an OIP about how we're gonna be doing this. It's not a replacement for the board, what it is, is giving them an outlet to go ahead and share about what's happening in the community. Like in Midlani, we have a number of, of events from the Midlani town association, a lot of great events. Things the boards can put out there, which don't impact NCO. So NCO shouldn't be providing the labor to support that. But there's a lot of areas here that, why would you gather information? The question is twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, those, I don't know how you're gonna compile all of those. Questions that you can get, we need responses rather than, you know, checking off. Yeah, those are words, words of the church. Please, those things will be taken into account, I'd say by the commission, how would you compile? You mean, you're gonna tally up Excel, every, go ahead, every time?
I, I sent you an email link, I don't know if you reviewed it, but I didn't know if I was actually a member of the committee, but I got an invitation, so I didn't know.
Okay, anyone, anybody can go, any of the commissioners can have an invitation.
But committee chair asked me afterwards to look into electronic, you know, taking this electronically. And part of it is, so I, I put it all into, and actually I went through a number of services, there is Survey Monkey, you have to pay for that. So Microsoft, you can do it for free, and I thought that was better than Google for various reasons. But anyway, I have a link that'll show you the results, and it shows you the results, you know, from these fill-in questions too. Like if you look at a short compile, all the graphics, it'll have the last response, but you can click on the details, and it'll give you all the responses. And so, yeah, there's no graphics, obviously, to the fill-in link, but you can see all the responses. And at the end, you can export all this into an Excel spreadsheet, and then you can do those more fundamental data analysis type of questions. But that's kinda complicated, I know I have someone who knows what they're doing to do that, but you can see nice little graphs of the, the all the answers, and I took it twice, just to put in various answers, and I sent the links to Dylan, but I forgot he wasn't gonna be here, so. But if anyone wants to see that, I can, you know, you can help that out.
That'd be great, I think the beauty of it is looking at flat files. You have all these flat files, as you come to, not coming to none of them, to actually see who we have on our boards. And how best can we serve them, that keeps going back to the million chairs. People talk about this and that, but these kind of questions are important, because then we actually have the individual responses there. The updates, priorities, training. So the things you're wondering, do you wanna come back with another draft, or how do you wanna proceed? I'd like to go ahead and walk through just the questions again, we did that, and then refine it one more time, where the commission, let me refine it.
Sorry, to, one more time, refine it?
Fine, I will refine it, yes.
In, looking at some of the questions, like, for example, number twelve, if you look at a question, if they have a component that uses too little, just write too much. About, I don't have enough experience to make that judgment. A lot applicable, like number twelve. How much support have you, you know, what, what do you do? You know, some of those questions, I think after having a preference, somebody has no preference, but, yeah, insufficient knowledge, you know, let, this, you just studied, that could be the board. You don't really, you're always trying to figure out how the, how the world works, you know, knowing the world is a weird seal. But you, you would don't be supposed to know just write too much, you pigeon them into an answer that might not give you a true picture of the, you know, what they know, what they feel.
The one thing I wanna ask the commission, we have talked about electronic, using Survey Monkey, things like that, in the past, we've not done that. Is that something we wanna propose this time?
I don't know, I will be a question for Lloyd.
Yeah, I, you mean as far as doing the survey?
Electronic.
What do you mean, as far as electronic, what?
Does, yeah.
Doing the survey.
So you get a link.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
If, if I can, so you get a link, and.
Yeah, I didn't know what he meant, but yes, if we're gonna, if we haven't done it electronic, it'd be too online.
It would really simplify more.
It would, it would, it would make it quicker, exactly, you just have control once in the person is, is getting that.
How would you find it to do it, to be? Just send them out?
No, I don't send them out, but yeah, how are you gonna, how are?
Are we, like we have in the past?
If, if, yeah, if you, as far as results, if you're working with a company that does it, when they go to the site and they log on and they do the survey, that thing automatically puts everything together, I mean, it's, yeah, it's.
How are the masteries, how would you know?
I don't know, there are similar types of questions, but I don't know.
It was all electronic, did you hear?
Yeah, I, I, I thought, yeah, I thought of the last seventy years, all of it.
If I had one particular catch, problem with this, that we have to decide upon, is if you send out a link, someone can take that same survey multiple times. If you, if you do it under a service, like, you can have, require them to have an account, so only one person can do it at a time, you know, that account holder can only take one, if we went that route, I would probably suggest Google, because many more people have Google accounts. But anyway, that's something to think about, if, if that's what you're working on.
Actually, what we should do is just research.
We thought about the DNA dump layer, like this fat ass produce, cell number. We don't have one person taking twenty surveys. Some way of a segment.
They want one cell number.
You can make that up too.
Unless we check out some.
Would Google be an adventurous choice then?
If you want to require an account, so in other words, like if you have one Google account, now in theory, people could make multiple accounts, but that gets cumbersome, and it's gonna keep them from doing it like ten or twenty times. So if someone wants to gain the system, they can, but it's, it's much easier to control, so that's, that's just a decision.
The way it seems like this is for you, it's like, why, once you get the
The way it seems like this was for you is like, you want, once you get the survey, you're going to email it to everybody, take it and send it out. That's what you were planning to try. That's right.
To the media.
So is that that that, is it a good plan or a bad plan or?
It can be.
Well, I would, I mean, the question I would have is, what would be the incentive for someone to take this multiple times? Because this is just an informational gathering tool. Unless someone wants to throw a monkey attempt into it, I can't imagine, you know, why, what would be the incentive to kind of game the system?
Well, this is going to be a bottomless thing to worry. You wouldn't send it out.
Well, if it comes in through email, yes, it would. But if you do Survey Monkey or something like that, then you don't.
It would be anonymous.
And then it would have to do PSL.
Well.
Just give me a, I'm sorry, this chair. It would be anonymous unless you go the route that they are required to uh, to log in or have an email, like a Google account. And then it would just tell you that they took the survey.
So we've got to figure all of that out.
Too late.
Do you think five? Well, yeah, like Lloyd said, what what is, what does that mean?
We.
We'll give it.
We'll give it some options.
Some can serve one. Google, Google will give.
And also they could identify them someday by name before, that might be more helpful.
I have, I have that in here and also as an option to put in there what board you're on. I have it as another option.
Well, I'm assuming is this going to share the questions or to all the board?
All the all the members.
So it's all.
We're going through protocol, which I can.
The warranty was perspective.
Okay, yeah, I think, yeah. Couple things. The the beauty of anonymous is that you can be completely honest and you can be so nobody will know. If we know where, and there's some of the questions are evaluation questions. And I think Dylan might want to speak to that. I think whenever you have an evaluation question, it is a little bit more sensitive. So.
Yeah.
Actually, go ahead.
Yeah, so you know, and in fact, I have another item, but I think that Dylan can speak to it.
Yeah, just just in brief to give our perspective um, for questions seven, eight, nine.
Yeah.
Um, as well as twelve, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Um, those are all more in vain of the neighborhood commission office itself and performance of the neighborhood commission office. And I think we just had concerns more so with the purview of the commissioners um, essentially soliciting uh, evaluation of of the neighborhood commission office itself. Um, I think one of the newer ones, and 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 it's something we can work on, but I think there's just some, even to a degree of just maybe some refining, like for example, fifteen. Uh, concerning the regular meetings of the neighborhood commission, the NCO has a YouTube channel where the NCO stores commission regular meetings. What is your board's preference for video? You would install. And the options are YouTube, Olovo, and no preference. While like, for example, Olovo does not store video, I mean, they just run it on TV. Um, we have a contractor who films for us and then they have hard storage, but then also we store and WebEx stores on program. And we do a lot of that. So I just think that there's some things where it's like.
So that has to be. But why?
Well, I think if we're just process stuff, that like if we talked about it, we could maybe help come up with like a better.
Sure, so many, because Olovo, I found back to Olovo and actually extracted the exact, exactly what I wanted from working. They can write that.
Yeah, they they can do that, but but it's just that their primary function, because like a lot of people, for example, do mistake Olovo and they say, oh yeah, the Olovo guy's up, the YouTube video filming. Those those people are not Olovo.
That's right.
Yeah, they're contractors. And and so it's just trying to clarify some of that.
Send me, send me any uh, comments and let's amend this. One more, I'll provide to the page here. That'll work. Because if you, I was positioning this as this would be another refinement. You had so many comments last time, so we'll do one more bit. Okay, before we send out.
Also, also, Chair, on item number six, um, preferences of board meetings. Uh, in person video combination, the video stack should virtually virtual. And there is no, the law does not allow a virtual meeting. What it allows is a virtual meeting with a physical location. So it's it's a hybrid, but OIP guys don't want us to use the word hybrid and it's.
Yeah, so and and I think we had a brief conversation on this last time, but and and I know it's really, and well, there's two things about it. One is what word you actually used. The second one is asking a question on something that's currently not in the law.
But what's going to be so?
Well, so so I think really what it comes down to is just maybe, maybe we can provide some comments on.
So in person?
Yeah, but I I think that's.
So from OIP's perspective, their standard is either in person or remote. Those are the terms that you said.
So that's what should be on the question.
And and remote means you, remote, yeah, it is, and remote means virtual. But they call it remote because any virtual meeting you have by definition in law requires that you have a remote location.
It has to be a question, because of disabilities.
If I might, uh, without, I I I think it's perfectly appropriate to ask people even to ask questions about their preferences regarding things that aren't currently lawful, simply because it's important to know if that's their preference. And then maybe they, you can say it's, well, yes, we know it's your preference, but we can't do that based on the current law. They can solicit uh, their legislators to perhaps update the law in a way that's more conducive to how they vision.
Yeah, and we actually, we actually agree. I just think that there's maybe some sort of clarification in that uh, in regarding the fact that.
We could.
But like, because it goes back to the terminology as well. And then, of course, we also would encourage any neighborhood boards to pass resolutions if that's what they wish to do in the first place.
One thing we found, some of the respondents, was that they need to understand, you're dealing with people across a great demographic. And they don't understand virtual. I went to board meetings, I taught upon his, their cell phones started to engage in a virtual meeting. And it was great, but a lot of them don't even, don't have like August. We're trying to use a common denominator, video. We, I had virtual there before, they just. We can put more words, they're just to refine more specifically.
I think, I think what they're trying to say is that by law or by laws or constitution, they are not allowed to accept virtual meetings as decision-making. I've since the pandemic, I've gone to so many organizational meetings where they had to back end it, you know, they've passed, passed resolution and all these things, but they now have to now add a certain amount of people in person. Regarding a much, a quorum of people in person at a hybrid meeting, but they have had that majority of people that they have online and in person to pass, to change their bylaws, to say, we will accept virtual results.
Well, I think like if you had an entirely separate question that was just, do you think solely virtual meetings should be legal? Then I think you could pull.
I don't think so.
Well, no, but do you think they should be? But but having, using terminology and then putting something in a question that like currently people couldn't pick anyway, I think just going to make it a little.
I have to fundamentally disagree with that perspective in the first place. I think you should ask. In the second place, I don't think you just necessarily should let people know it's not legal under the current law, because you're just asking for their preference, and I think that may color their judgment. Uh, if you say, well, it's not lawful, they're going to be like, well, it's not lawful, we're not going to select that option. To say, I I, I don't see why we'd be prohibited from asking that question even though it's not lawful.
Yeah, exactly.
Because they're trying to make a change.
I I wouldn't change the question as to say, what is your preference for attending a meeting in person or virtually? I mean, basically, it's how do you attend a meeting? We have a pretty good gauge at that point. But following that up, it could be um, something related to, you know, do you? Or do you prefer attending the meeting virtually or in person? Something, but I but I I agree, we shouldn't, we shouldn't start off like this is not correct. But at the same time, if we want to find out, and I'm interested in how many people of all our meetings attend virtually and how many attend in person. We we have that data, but you got to go through every meeting and then figure it out. But it would be really nice to just send it out to all of the same people. And and it is, we do, I do not care for the requirement that you have to have an in-person location. That is money drain on us.
So OIP.
As a point, yes.
Yeah, that's a good.
And 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 I think that, I think the emergency proclamations allow virtual meetings period, you're not that physical. But it became law, that's been.
So if you have to do that, what about when you have only in-person meetings? Are you required to do a virtual conference?
No, no, no.
And the question is. The other way you got. Because it doesn't look quite right. Because it's not, which is fine, because like our board, like I'll decide to go all in person, because we're just in a problem. Technical problem in terms of hearing, the speaker, something like that, you should, yeah, you just go to the in-person. So everybody's starting to.
It has, it has benefit. The the challenge is that not every meeting place is the same. Every location is the same, you know, so.
Yeah, that's that's.
You know, there are places that is like really challenging to do the virtuals. It just, just, it is.
But if I might add, well, that's why it's important, I think, if you get to the root of the feelings of of the beliefs and what people's preferences truly are, and then, you know, that's kind of why I like the question as it is. But it's, it's, I understand, but but I'm just saying, that that's what you're trying to ascertain is what are the true preferences here?
Right.
And and go from there.
Right, and and it's.
It's just informational. You can have that question. Okay, well, I'm just, but.
And and maybe it is.
What what I'd like to see is to help also NCO and the resources, we have this, it's anonymous, but actually like any mechanic boards will say, so now what board is responding? Then you would know where to get your your, your resources, where is trainings concerned? Some boards may be more seasoned than others. And the functionality of the boards is different, they're really different. They're really different. Some boards are just hungry to get going, get started, they're not sure where to go. Some boards have been around for years and years and they're just like an auto hire. So knowing which boards actually, the the response that we get, boards are very helpful.
Okay, I think we need to move along, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I have nothing else, we're going to do one more, let her do one more, Ryan, you you send it out to the commissioners in terms of when your next meeting.
But you know, I, well, we don't, I want to do this. You don't have to do another one of those we've prolonged.
Survey meeting? Survey meeting, go ahead and update this and then present it in our next commission meeting. So you go to set up another track.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I could ask, I know this, it seems like the survey is a pretty well-known process, but it it seems like to me it'd be interesting to know what are the status of the current board that they serve on? Is there conflict where they feel like they're actually achieving a legitimate purpose, kind of those two? Those two areas, it could be an interesting question.
If you want to spread the shit.
Okay.
Well, I mean, that sounds like a good question.
I'll do that.
Anything, just email to him. Some boards really want to excel and they feel a little bit limited, because there's a top internal conscious. Some board just.
It's not.
Over and on. Yeah. Yeah. When I was talking with our board, so we have about an hour and a half, so we're done. Some boards are just so long because of the, one of the videos they have.
Okay, um, we're going to move on to the next item, we're going to have committee reports. For three committees, Jerry reported the next committee.
Oh, am I a chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, whether that happened. I wasn't here. Uh, we have, uh, we have further updates.
Okay, good. We already talked about survey committees, survey.
Yeah, that's for the complete endeavor, thankfully.
Um, that's not bad. I wanted to do one other thing tonight, and that's to appoint Patrick to that committee as well. I know he has a personal interest in surveying on that. And um, we have to get, we have any volunteers to be the chairs there?
What, what chair?
That neighborhood plan committee, because that needs to be frank enough, so, or we need somebody to to spearhead that. But I'm going to ask the commissioners to all participating, they can, because that's a really important committee, so.
I think I mean do it.
Okay. No, it's to convene the meetings, you know, the meetings as, you know, as we move further, because I think we've got like a year or a year and a half to finish that, right?
Oh.
Twenty twenty eight.
No, I have to be like twenty eight.
Yeah, sorry, the meeting. I mean, there's no, we're run for, you know, at least we constitute the committee and we can. Have it, and maybe you can prompt us if we need to start scheduling something, because it sounds like we're going to get input already from the survey, what's happening, secondly, we're going to get input from the thing they had last month, Chinatown. So, you know, I'm sure proposals will be coming in for the neighborhood plan. As long as we're ready to to move on that, so appointing Patrick to that committee and. Good. Chair, which is fine.
Right.
Okay, and that will be reflected in our next uh, agenda when we list all the committees. Good, okay, so announcements, next uh, meeting will be on October twenty third at six PM here, in Cala La Habana, in Bali. Are there any other announcements? If not, we're going to turn the meeting and we're going to reconvene to the judicatory portion of our meeting. We have two items, so.
Can you explain to, sorry, everybody in the line, we're going to have to kick it off.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.